Call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being streamed live by the Township of Addington, Ireland's YouTube channel. For those present in the gallery today by attending a public meeting of council, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded. Anyone invited to speak will be recorded and their voice, image, and comments will form part of the live stream. The Chair and/or Clerk have the discretion and authority at any time to direct the termination or interruption of the live streaming. Such direction will only be given in exceptional circumstances where deemed relevant. Circumstances may include instances where the content of debate is considered misleading, defamatory, or potentially inappropriate to be published. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with the Ontario's Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information provided for or at a public meeting slash consultation or other public process are considered part of the public record. Members of council, staff, delegations, and attendees should be mindful of using names of individuals or entities when discussing matters in public. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions result in inappropriate and/or unacceptable behaviour and/or comments. As per the tax procedural bylaw as amended, all votes during electronic meetings will be recorded votes. All of council is present in the council chambers with the exception of councillor Hook, who was absent. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, councillor Yance. Any additional items? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting, of this special meeting dated June 17th, 2025. Councillor Yance. Deputy Reeve Fritsch. Any errors or omissions? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Adoption of the regular meeting minutes of the June 17th, 2025. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, councillor Yance. Once again, any errors or omissions? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance. That motion is carried. No business. Is there any disclosure, the peculiar interest in the general nature thereof? None noted. Rise and report. I've got a report. A closed meeting was held on, at 12:00 PM today pursuant to section 239, sub two of the Municipal Act as amended, at which recommendations were made to adopt the closed meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025 to receive an update regarding an employee of the municipality to review applications received for the temporary part-time office assistant position and select candidates for interview to receive and approve a request from the deputy clerk planning secretary and to receive personal information about an identifiable individual. We need a motion that be resolved with the recommendations from the closed meeting be adopted. Councillor Thompson. Deputy Reeve Fritsch. Additional comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Delegations and petitioners. Lions Club of the Land O' Lakes. Who's speaking? Mr. Short going to speak? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for... Looking to, for approval to sponsor our application to the Community Foundation of Lennox and Addington for a grant of $20,000 to be used to purchase a backup generator for our emergency preparedness plan program that we're putting in place at the Lions Club Hall. As I said, I'm looking for sponsorship. As the Lions Club are not a registered charity, we are a nonprofit organization. And the Community Foundation of Lennox and Addington will give grants to organizations that are registered charities or municipalities. They will allow grants to, they do give grants to nonprofits as long as the grant is sponsored either by a registered charity or a municipality. We've, the Lions Club have received in the past four years, three other smaller grants. The Cloyne and District Historical Society has been our sponsor for those. This one being $20,000, they asked that we approach the municipality to see if they would sponsor us for this one. So what we were doing, planning to do is you've given, the township has given, recognized the fact that we are going, putting in place an emergency preparedness plan. Our intent is to eventually, once it's completed, be able to open up as a disaster relief center. We prepared, put together a full plan two years ago when we started our fundraising program. And about a year and a half ago, we started the actual work. We already replaced all the flooring with a, in the kitchen with a non-slip flooring system. We've replaced all the counters and cupboards. We now have stainless steel countertops. We have a new hand washing station. We have a three gang commercial washing station, complete with a grease interceptor. Our recent project that we finished under this program is a vent hood with a fire suppression system over our commercial stove and our oven. It has been completed now and approved. We're now want to move on to our next phase, which is our emergency backup generator. So we do have power, if we're selected as a disaster relief center, to continue operating as one. We have been, already been out talking with contractors. We've dealt with three of them so far to get information, to get costs, how we'll put it together. We've talked to our propane suppliers, so we have a good idea how we'll set up the propane. So we are in a position where we're ready to move. We have already received a $13,686 grant from Lions Club International Foundation. We're looking for another $20,000 here. That will be, give us enough to actually proceed and go out and purchase the generator. We have, first, continued to have our fundraising programs and we have almost enough money at this point to do the installation once it's purchased. So what we're looking for at this point, we do need the $20,000 to help us. Community Foundation of Lennox and Addington have confirmed that they're willing to give us this through their fund holder and that is the Mazna Community Foundation. So I've got confirmation from the Mazna Community Foundation, got confirmation from the Community Foundation of Lennox and Addington. I just now need approval from the township to act as our sponsor. Have any questions?
Tony. Well, a comment and then a question. So it's a great initiative, so I can see things progressing. I have a question of our CAO, right? Procedurally, as far as what's proposed? Everything's, you're fine with everything that's there?
Yeah, I am now. Gary and I have had some back and forth communication just clarifying from my perspective what was needed from the municipality. And no, I think, I think everything, everything would work well. No issues.
We've had several generators installed here in the municipality and you might want to speak with our building inspector to get some heads up as to what to look for and not look for.
Already spoken with him several times. I think we started about a year and a half ago.
Good, good. Any other comments? I guess I need a motion to approve this. Councillor Thompson, councillor Yance. Further comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you very much for...
You're welcome. And now, community banners.
Hello. Lyn Low from the Lions Club. I'm, I'm now vice president actually at this Lions Club along with...
Past president of the Lions Club as of the 1st of July. I don't get as many emails now.
First of July, that's not long ago.
No, it's, it's pretty new. We're getting used to it. We're here to talk about the banner program, so the Remembrance Day banner program that we did come to you last year for to just, for awareness that were along Highway 41 in both Northbrook and Cloyne. It was a very successful program. Touching and really important to the community that to acknowledge people that have served in our military.
So what we'd like to do this year is expand the program that we have to include Flinton and Plevna perhaps, you know, we realize it's a different municipality. But we'd probably put up about five or six in this municipality. I've watched the program across Canada and I see not very far from us in Perth, I don't know if you read about it, but they've installed over 300 of them last year at a cost of almost $300. Ours were a little cheaper. They were half that price, I guess. And we intend to carry on for the same thing. If you look at the Senate app in Flinton and attend the November 11 ceremonies, you'll notice that you have a lot of names from local people here. And I think that it would be appropriate that those people that have fought in the first, Second World War be remembered. I'm a veteran myself. Fortunately, I'm still alive and I saw, my picture was up there too. But it's, it's something to do for, for the community and it'll be installed for a period of two years. At which time, after the two years, the banners will be returned to the families. Half of the costs paid by the Lions and half of the costs by the members' family. So...
So we need permission to place the banners on the hydro poles on your road. So...
On our side of the...
Flinton Road, on your side of the road. So it's a two-step process, getting permission from the highways and then getting permission from hydro. So once I get permission here, then hydro will come out, identify the poles that we're allowed to put the banners on. As Red mentioned, we're just aiming for about six. If the response is really good, we can increase it to 10. It's just not in our budget and don't tell the treasurer. He's not gone. We are having our ceremony, our banner reveal ceremony on September 21st and then we wish to hang them the following week till after November, after Remembrance Day. So they'll be up about seven weeks. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions on 15? Did you have a question?
I actually do and I apologize if I don't read it in here. Did you mention which particular street you're wanting to install these?
On Flinton Road.
Okay.
Yes.
So that being a county road, we would just have to loop them in and just up this request to the, to the county. Just want a council to, to be cognizant of that.
Any other? Kirby.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that I thought it's a wonderful idea. I saw them last year and it was, although my family were on there, but it was, it was touching to see. It's nice to remember people that way.
Thank you, yes.
Any other? Tony.
Just a comment. The actual celebration, the event at the Lions Hall, it was at that last year. It was well orchestrated extremely, but also very, a very moving event. It pulled at your heartstrings and, and your emotions for sure. It was an excellent event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Considering that this was done at the very last minute. Yeah, I know. You had to see how you managed to get it through last year.
Yeah.
Good. Kirby's making a motion to approve this request, seconded by councillor Yance. Further questions or comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matters for consideration. First, we got a request from the Land O' Lakes Lions Club concerning a noise exemption for Ribfest.
You want me to talk about it? Ribfest, our second annual Ribfest is happening in August and hopefully it doesn't rain, so we'd like to be outside making some noise from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. We'll have some live music, so it's amplified music. So we have to request an exemption from the bylaw. So it's on Saturday, August 16th and it will run from 4:00 to 9:00 PM.
Comments, questions? If not, I need a motion to approve this request. Councillor Thompson. Second by deputy Reeve Fritsch. Any further comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, busy.
Now we've got a resolution from the town of Branford. See ya. What's your mission?
I'll make a motion to receive and support.
Seconded by councillor Thompson. Comments? Helen.
I'm just not sure what the income replacement benefit is.
It looks as to increase from 20 to 40, doesn't it?
Yeah. I'm, I'm in support, but I'm just not quite sure what the, what it is.
Well, there's...
Tony.
I want to explain that, that in detail, but it, it's more the threshold of what they can earn prior. So they, they're saying that if you earned over 20,000, you didn't get it. It's essentially what was happening, but they want to raise it like through other means so that you can earn 40,000 through whatever other part-time job you have and still be qualified to get this benefit. Except because it ended up, the result was so, so low, you couldn't survive on it, right?
So we got a motion to receive and support? For the comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Matters for information. Six matters for information. Councillor Yance.
To approve all matters of information?
Seconded by councillor Thompson. Comments on any of those? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Committees and boards. Didn't we ever had committee though? We got a report from the age-friendly community, we got an update. Resolved that the recommendation from the steering committee for the age-friendly community to create a seniors webpage for it to be received. And... Okay, yes.
Thank you. So this is just to provide the council with an update regarding the age-friendly community steering committee. We had a meeting recently on June 19th and the agenda included the results of the stakeholder survey that we had sent out to organizations and businesses in the community to see what services they offered, what gaps they might see in the community. So we, we had that on the agenda. We also were discussing a dedicated webpage on our website for seniors and we received some information from the, regarding the community garden and the dental care program that's offered to seniors. The agenda could be found on the civic portal. So the committee reviewed the responses from the stakeholders and partners and then, and the outlined the services and the gaps that were identified. We were pleased to see that there was a number of services offered in the community, but were concerned that perhaps the public was not aware of all of them. And so that's when we discussed the recommendation for a webpage dedicated to seniors. And on that webpage, we've had staff work on, on identifying some of the programs that are available and contacts that may be required for seniors. So it included such things as Meals on Wheels, the foot care clinic, medical services, the dental program, Service Ontario, the mobile unit, some recreational activities as well. And there were many services identified, which, you know, we could outline on that page. The committee also intends to continue to review the services and gaps that were identified and work with other stakeholders. But at this time, made only the following recommendation and that is that it be recommended that a seniors webpage be created on the township website and further that staff use their perspective to make it efficient. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Tony.
Yeah, a quick comment. Yeah, so it's a great initiative and, and there are like essentially hundreds of things available for, for seniors. It's almost overwhelming if you're looking for a service, you could pretty well find it there. But anyway, once this is posted and operational, we'll also become clear if people bring it up that if there's any gaps that are out there in our municipality. So yeah, this is a great start.
Go ahead.
And sorry, further to that, once we create that, that webpage, that information would also be available in print that we could offer to anyone who did not have access to the internet and we may even, you know, we would publicize that as well so others in the community can let people know that they could reach out and, and get that information from us.
Any other, Tony?
Just make a motion to receive this report and approve the proposal.
Seconded, councillor Yance. Further questions or comments? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, Patricia. Roads and waste. Brett.
Afternoon folks. I guess I'll start it with the roads department. We're, grading's being completed as needed in this weather permits. Dust suppression application is started and will be continuing to, until complete. We should finish in Ward 1 today. And this week, there's a load coming here to the Ward 2 as well. So we'll, we should be done within the next couple of weeks. Work on Bridge Street will soon be starting with pulverizing and grading so we can have it completed end of summer. So that's tentatively starting next, or this, this upcoming Monday. So they're going to start pulverizing and, and that work will be started. New eight-ton excavator is delivered and working. And mowing, actually it started today. So we do have another mower coming and so we're going to have two tractors on the roads doing air mowing and get it, get things cleaned up that way. So... One other thing that I didn't mention in my report here was we discussed a while back, I guess, that one of our operators was attending the, the rodeo in Bancroft and actually they qualified for provincials. So, so that's going to be held in Carlton Place in September, I believe. So Perry of Washington is going to be going up and representing the township there. So, and representing the district. So, yeah. As far as waste sites go, we have our students going now and our seasonal waste site attendant. And this will help cover some of our holidays during the summer. Gives us some extra hands that can fill in where needed. Spring landfill monitoring is completed. I haven't received the results yet, so... And I think that's about it. My recommendation was that council receive the report, so...
Anyone have any questions Brett? Tony.
Thanks, Henry. Yeah Brett, I had just a question, a couple of questions on Bridge Street. Sort of, sort of three questions. I'll ask them all together. So one is, the first one relates to the curbs. So the concrete curbs question is, would they be staying? I believe so. The second one is the storm drainage or the storm drainage infrastructure would just stay in its current state? And, and the third one is the pulverizing is being done by us or a contractor?
So the pulverizing is being done by a contractor. Greenwood has their own pulverizer that they'll come in and do it. As far as the storm sewer, staying as is and the curb will be staying as is too. So, yeah.
Thank you Brett.
Any other questions? Need a motion to receive the report? Deputy Reeve Fritsch, seconded by councillor Thompson. Further questions? Ready for the vote councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you Brett. CBO. David. Right?
Oh, I think it's me still.
Oh, oh, sorry. I missed Brett's second report.
That's okay. So the Demby landfill remediation tender. We, in the spring, this spring, we received approval for our closure plan for Demby landfill. At that time, we reached out to our consultant to get updated costs, our projected costs, so that we could include this in our 2025 budget. The budget number that we carried was around $650,000. So we got the tender documents all prepared by our consultant and we posted them on bid and go June 12th. We also advertised where the documents were available in North Frontenac News and on our website. A list of tender items and a copy of the little plan were attached, were attached to this report. So you saw the tender items and such. Approximately 32 contractors took tender documents. We had a, a non-mandatory site meeting. So anybody that wanted to attend, it was held June 26th at 9:00 AM for any contractors that wanted to look at the site. After the site meeting, we had, two addendums were issued to address questions proposed by the contractors. Tender closed July 3rd at 2:00 PM and a consultant's report is attached with seven tenders received. So I guess my recommendation is that council receives this report and awards attended a hay base, sand, and gravel as recommended by joint engineering, so...
Questions, comments? If not, I need a motion to receive, receive and adopt. Councillor Yance, deputy Reeve Fritsch. Ready for the vote councillor Thompson? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, Brett. Now we'll go to David.
Good afternoon, everyone. CBO report for the month. Housing starts continue to be a bright spot on the building front. And I would say our housing numbers as far as cottages and single-family dwellings are running not that far behind last year's, actually. Some of the smaller projects have kind of tuned out. Or there aren't as many of them. So overall, permit numbers in general are down year over year. A lot of the a lot of the projects out there are not getting completed as fast as I would like to see them completed now. And 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 the onus is on, of course, the homeowner, the property owner to call call for inspections and get some of these situations to the finish line. Understand there are always certain circumstances that might prevent that from happening, but I encourage everyone to that has an open building permit to give me a call, tell me what the status is on that particular project, because as I say, we do have a lot of projects on file that are sitting still. And typically, when the year starts to wind down, I send letters out asking them where they are in their, if I haven't heard from them in a year, where they are in their construction process and I'd like an update. So. The Ontario Building Code Act does give you the option of having to renew that permit. I've never been down that road, but I do encourage those with open permits to to give a call and at least give me an update as to where things are. So. And and we're not alone. Other municipalities and chapters members are mirroring the same image that permit numbers are down this year. And that's just part and parcel of economic reality of the times we're living in. Facilities management, canopy construction at the act is underway. That got underway actually today. Playground maintenance on existing structures has been completed. So we have, we always, we have an annual playground inspection done. And we've done that for, I think this is going on the third year. We have an annual inspection done on existing playground structures. And from that, we take the most hazardous situations. And we we usually have our handyman go around and fix those situations and bring them into compliance with what the inspection report noted on her inspection. So that that's that's finished up. Fencing completion at the library here in Flinton. We had a tree there that had to be taken out last fall. So I was able to go over here. They gave us a chunk of chain link fence there last fall when they were finishing up and the installers. And I went over and installed that a couple of weeks ago. Tree fell on the one end of it next to the river and crushed the top rails. So that's been replaced as well. So. Fence is back in action and serving the purpose it was intended to serve. Groundskeepers are busy with maintaining our several properties. I think they all look fairly well kept and I'm happy with them. Few smaller issues, but nothing really too overwhelming. Met with Dyna Care reps for an overview of their plans to renovate space to actively manage their operations up at the Northbrook Medical Center. Plans will be submitted to the building department ASAP. I did note that that happened last weekend. They have since updated their plan, their site plan as to how they want the layout to look. Certainly seemed to meet with our CIOs and my my okay on that front so far. So no big changes, just just some little bit of reorganization. Basketball nets, we had some basketball netting replaced at the Tracy Park has been completed. Urinals installed at the act. I know I'm all over the place today. I'm going from one area to the other. Urinals at the act have been installed, the new urinals. That was a bit of a maintenance issue up there. We didn't have an we didn't have a water reservoir that well, it was leaking the water reservoir above the urinals. So we did have two new urinals installed. They're not totally hooked up yet, but our plumber is in the process of doing that. They work on an infrared light, so a step back and they flush. So that will be great when that's finished up. RFQ for the Denby Hall flooring project, that is out there. We're receiving tenders until July the 18th. So that closes July 18th. I've had I've had lots of interest in it. So hopefully, that's going to going to give us some results. I'll be back next council meeting probably with something on that issue. Breakdowns at the Northbrook Medical Center. One of the air conditioning units at the far end of the building is non-operational. Fan motor on the furnace in that end of the building also needs replacing and will require the repair prior to the installation or the installment of a new air conditioning unit. So I went out to three noted installers. These these quotes have been submitted so far for the project. The quotes are as follows and includes supply and installation. Hamilton Smith, eighty-nine hundred and eighty-nine, eighty-nine hundred and ninety dollars. Includes new blower, three-ton central air conditioning unit. Universal HVAC also put in a quote of sixty-five seventy-five plus HST. Includes new blower estimate only and a three-ton conditioning unit. Bosley Heating and Cooling, they put in a quote of eight thousand plus HST, but that was only for the three-ton air conditioning unit. My recommendation, I am recommending utilizing Hamilton Smith for the installation of the air conditioning unit at the Northbrook Medical Center and new blower for furnace. Hamilton Smith does actively maintain our HVAC systems at numerous locations. And I must say their prompt service and expediency and in getting out there and and looking at some of our situations as they arise are hereby noted. On the bylaw, do we, on the bylaw enforcement front, actively enforcing bylaws as time permits. Seeing a very positive response to chicken issues. Now I have been involved with three or four situations whereby, I think it was just a matter of education and actually giving them a copy of our chicken bylaw. And I have tentatively been doing follow-ups on those situations. So there's fifty chickens. I drive by a week later and see if there's sixty chickens or six chickens. And and lately, it's 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 coming around. It seems to it seems to be working successfully. In most cases, yeah, I haven't I have seen six and less. So I I'm hoping that that is a good precursor of 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 future situations and and how they unfold. So. Outside of that, I've always got noise, noise issues and garbage issues and they're dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So it's all seems to be going fairly well. So that is my report.
Anyone have any questions? David? If not, I need a motion. Go ahead.
Yes. So for the H, the air conditioning unit, so Hamilton Smith, you have a three-ton central air conditioning. So you have Universal HVAC. It says just three-ton air conditioning unit. Is that the same thing?
Yep.
Both the same.
Yep.
So then on the
Different company, different company manufacturer.
So then on the they said they they gave HVAC or Universal gave a estimate
Yep.
on the new blower.
Yeah.
So was that price, do you know whether it was close to what Hamilton Smith was offering or?
I I'm not sure about that. He couldn't make sure.
That could be in.
He he couldn't give me a definite on that because of some unknowns.
Right. So but it wouldn't probably wouldn't be more than $2,000.
Yeah, you don't know. Well, the only thing I guess I can say on behalf of Universal is I arrived home from the hospital Christmas Eve and my furnace wasn't working. They installed a new one for me in two days.
Yep.
For not unreasonable price, but a lot more than I had expected to spend, but they did do a good job.
Yep.
Need a motion to receive the report and adopt a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to receive this report. And I guess I'll adopt the recommendation.
Second? Yes, Deputy Reece French. I know it's a tough one. Further comments? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
No.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Regulate the keeping of backyard chickens. Is there anything new to this or?
I can I can speak to this if you'd like.
If you would.
So just a bit of background information, as council recalls, in April, we adopted bylaw nine seventy-one, which was a bylaw to regulate the keeping of backyard chickens in only residential zones within the township of Addington Highlands. So that included Hamlet Residential, Residential Limited Services and Rural Residential. So in order to include it in that bylaw was a set fine list, which outlined the infractions and associated with that the monetary penalties that went along with it. In the process of applying for the set fines through the Ontario Court of Justice under Part One, so if we were to lay a fine under Part One, we needed to have our short form wording approved by the Ontario Court of Justice. So when I went to apply, it was determined that there were slight wording changes that needed to happen in order to create the offense. So the bylaw needs to impose a duty, a prohibition or an obligation to comply on a person or group of persons. If the person, if it is a person that we are wishing to ticket, so obviously, we can't ticket a chicken. It is the person that has made those circumstances possible which create the offense. So sections, just as an example, section three point one read that a maximum of six chickens shall be allowed on each property within a Hamlet Residential Zone and a Hamlet Residential, sorry, Residential Limited Services Zone. So in order to create the offense, the wording had to be changed slightly to say, no person shall be permitted to keep more than six chickens on each property within a Hamlet Residential Zone or Residential Limited Services Zone. So as a result, sections three point one, three point two, three point three, three point three, three point four, three six, four one, four two, four three, four five, four six and four eight have been amended to reflect the appropriate wording. If council approves the rem, the amended wording, there is a bylaw included in this agenda for adoption and to repeal the previous, the previous bylaw. Does anyone have any questions about that? My apologies that I did not catch that the first time.
See, the intent is I guess we need a motion to receive that report and adopt your recommendation. Counselor Thompson? Deputy Reece French, further questions or comments? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, Integrity Commissioner Services.
So just to reiterate our current service and how and how we got to this point. Council will recall that all municipalities in Ontario were required to appoint an integrity commissioner by March the first two thousand and nineteen. In an effort to provide consistency for the members of council and county council, the township of Addington Highlands was part of the original request for proposals process in conjunction with the County of Lenox and Addington and the member lower-tier municipalities. As a result, the County of Lenox and Addington and the four lower-tier municipalities all appointed Arid and Berlus to provide integrity commissioner services for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. At the conclusion of that contract, Arid and Berlus were reappointed for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three and then again for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. The current contract is set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. During a recent county clerks meeting that Patricia and I attended at the county building, the clerk from the town of Greater Napanee advised the group that the council of the town of Greater Napanee has requested that a request for proposal be issued for the integrity commissioner services as opposed to simply reappointing the current integrity commissioner. So that is the direction that their staff has been given. So they will be issuing a request for proposal. As this was a joint appointment, it was requested that each clerk bring this to their respective councils to get direction on how they would like to proceed. One municipality, obviously, the town of Greater Napanee, is going to issue an RFP. The decisions of the other councils are not yet known, and I believe county council is going to consider the same topic at your meeting in July. So my question to council is that, do we wish to issue an RFP for integrity commissioning commissioner services beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, or reappoint the current integrity commissioner? If we are wanting to issue an RFP, would council like to participate in a joint RFP which with with whichever municipalities within the County of Lenox and Addington choose or to issue one independently? We won't know what the rest of the lower-tier municipalities are going to do until each of their councils consider the options. I can't speak for the members of county council, but I do feel that there is benefit in in having a consistent integrity commissioner across the county. That being said, it is difficult to know how you, to the town of Greater Napanee is for sure going to go out. So I guess my recommendation, if you're looking to me for any, is that we perhaps take the position of the majority of the lower-tier municipalities and in particular, the County of Lenox and Addington. Any questions?
So we don't know to say like how many companies do this and what the charges are, right? Like, I mean, so without getting some comparisons, then we don't really know. So
That's correct.
To go with what we are going with, we may be paying more than what we have to be paying. So I think it would be a good idea to have an RFP done so that we can exactly see what we're being charged and who's charging the least and who's charging the most. So.
And the last RFP went out in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, actually, because we appointed them for twenty nineteen. So that is a considerable amount of of time. And and you're right, there are lots of organizations that do. It's typically law firms that do it, but that provide integrity commissioner services.
I'd like to see it consistent across the county. That's, I think, would be advantageous, but I might be wrong. Tony?
And my comment is, yeah, similar to Counselor Thompson is definitely go with issuing an RFP and 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 try to do and do it as a group to the best that whoever wants to participate. Then then let's do it with them, which is what.
You're making that a motion?
How much, how much does this cost us a year? This?
So it it could cost us nothing and it could cost us thousands of dollars. It just depends on the complaints. So if we get zero complaints, we have zero cost. I apologize, I don't have our current contract right in front of us. I can tell you, we had one complaint in twenty twenty-four. And it costs, I think it was right around the $3,500 for one complaint. And I believe the complaint was fairly quickly resolved. There was some communication on with the integrity commissioner on our committee structure and the codes of conduct which apply to each of those committees. Very, very quick, straightforward and dealt with.
So this, there isn't a retainer then for this? Thank you.
Tony.
I'll make a motion that we, um, issue an RFP jointly with whatever municipalities in our county want to participate.
Second. Counselor Thompson, further comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Bylaw enforcement.
So, um, just a little background information to provide, uh, some context to a bylaw that's located further down in the agenda. On June the third, two thousand and twenty five, council resolved to receive the report prepared by the CAO clerk treasurer regarding contracting out by law enforcement and further requesting staff to prepare a bylaw to appoint Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement Incorporated as bylaw enforcement officers for the township of Addington Highlands. Prior to passing the appointing bylaw, um, it is my opinion that it's prudent to enter into an agreement with Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement for the provision of bylaw enforcement services. Attached to this report is the agreement for council's consideration. The terms of the compensation which are outlined in the agreement are consistent with what was reported to council on June third, two thousand and twenty five. If council is satisfied with the agreement, there is a bylaw included in this agenda appointing the employees of Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement, Inc. as bylaw enforcement officers for the corporation of the township of Addington Highlands and authorizing the execution of the agreement between the municipality and Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement, Incorporated. Um, before I turn it over to any questions, um, I do want to, um, I've been requested to read this, this letter that was submitted after the publication of the agenda with respect to this, um, issue, and it is from the Scudamata District Rate Payers Association. And it reads as follows, Dear Addington Highlands Council, in reviewing the agenda for the council meeting on July eighth, I note that item eleven point three, point three on bylaw enforcement and wish to make a comment. So just to give council a little bit of context before I read on here. Eleven point three, three. Actually, I believe that's- typo. It's, it's, sorry, that's the, my number on my bylaw, on my agenda. It is four point two, um, that they are referring to. The serv- so four point two reads as follows, the services the contractor shall provide include investigation, reporting, resolving violations, issuing violation tickets and/or warnings, and the collection of fees for municipal bylaws, including but not limited to the yard bylaw, waste disposal bylaw, zoning bylaw and noise bylaw. So to continue on with the letter, first of all, we applaud the decision to contract out bylaw enforcement and believe this is a positive step forward to supplement already stretched resources. I note that in section four point two, the agreement includes four municipal bylaws. Although the document does state included but not limited to, we believe enforcing of the camping on municipal lands bylaw is important enough to be included here as well. Enforcement of the camping bylaw is of high importance to lake property owners, and we would respectfully request it be added to the agreement in its own right. Thank you for your consideration, Mary Ann Plum, President of the SDRA. One thing that I will note is that the agreement does say just that. Um, we have many, many bylaws that require enforcement, um, but that phrase including but not limited to encompasses all of those bylaws. Um, and, and I don't disagree, that particular one probably should be listed, um, with, with the four. So it's up to council if you wish the agreement to be amended. Um, and I think in terms of procedure, we're able to amend that to include that, um, provision and still be able to enact the bylaw with an amended agreement.
Yeah, I have no issue adding that on there. We, we can add that on, but just, uh, Christine, just being picky that in two point one B and then four point three, it refers to town instead of township. So I'm being picky, but, uh, anyway, those other two changes should happen as well.
I'll make those administrative changes. That was a typo on my part. My apologies.
Helen.
Yes, uh, I'd like to see, uh, this added to the bylaw, just to make it clearer for
Any other comments? So you're making, uh, if somebody make a motion on amending and?
I'll make that motion to amend.
You'll include the amendment? Second. Tony, further questions or comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Tony, Planning Secretary, Patricia.
Thank you. So I just thought I would provide council with an update on the community garden, although it's not an initiative, and it is a community initiative. Um, the township does have an interest as it's on township property, so I thought I'd happy to provide an update on the project. Under the leadership of Mrs. McLean, the community garden project has been, uh, progressing nicely. There has been, uh, two work day Bs, which, um, at that, it was quite impressive to see all the community members that work so efficiently together. There were craftsmen, businesses, community group members, and of course individually community members that all came together and worked on the project. As you could see, when you arrived, there were planter boxes that have been constructed and there has been, uh, community input with respect to accessibility on those boxes. Work is underway to create an entrance with a timber frame arch and prepare the water totes in order to have water available at the garden. I've under- I also understand there has been, uh, very generous contributions from businesses and, and the community. Everyone involved deserves a lot of credit, credit for their efforts, um, in making this project a reality. Thank you.
Any questions? Need a motion to receive that report? Deputy Refrits seconded by Counselor Yance. Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Health and Safety Committee Coordinator, we've got a harassment in the workplace policy.
So in Tanya's absence, I don't mind speaking, um, to the, the amendment. It's just simply, um, a, a, an amendment to reflect the changes that were made to the definition of harassment. They now include protection against virtual harassment and virtual sexual harassment. And so there is an updated, um, policy attached to the report for council's consideration.
I guess I need a motion to receive the, uh, receiving and approve the revised report. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Yance, any questions? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Nothing from fire chief. Water running downhill?
I wasn't available last month. I was away.
If further- Helen, anything happen there?
All is well at Mississippi.
Approval of the accounts as of June the thirtieth. Deputy Refrits, Counselor Yance, any questions? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Any members' statements? New business. Bylaw to regulate the keeping of backyard chickens.
Give that three readings.
Counselor Thompson seconded by Deputy Refrits. Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Bylaw to enter into an agreement with the Prime National Enforcement, Inc. Counselor Yance, three readings? Second. Counselor Thompson, any questions or comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Deputy Refrits? Counselor Thompson? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Yance, ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Deputy Refrits?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried and we adjourned. Thank you, everyone.